County School Board into order. And then I guess I have a motion to read regarding our closed meeting. I move, am I allowed to make, I'm just acting chair, so I'm allowed to make a motion, right? I move that the Admiral County Public School Board go into a closed meeting as authorized by the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, Section 2.2-3711A of the Code of Virginia, under subsection one, for the discussion consideration, our interviews of prospective candidates for employment, for the assignment appointment promotion performance, the motion salaries disciplining or resignation of specific public officers, appointees, or employees of any public body. Jennifer?
Yep, Ms. Osborne?
Yes.
Ms. Carlson?
Yes.
Mr. Oberg?
Yes.
Dr. Acuff?
Yes.
Mr. Alcarro?
Yes.
Great, Jennifer, can you reach out, try to call Graham or?
Yeah, I will do.
All right, we'll see you guys over there.
I don't want to run the meeting, so.
I'll see y'all over there.
So I think we can go ahead and begin, do we have, I guess first, a certification of our closed meeting?
I move that the board certify by recorded vote that to the best of each board member's knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted from the open meeting requirements of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act and identified in the motion authorizing the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered in the closed meeting.
Second.
Ben, I'm sure I don't think you can second, so I will.
Thank you, you saw me do the little like, hmm, let's see.
I second on your behalf.
Thank you. Jennifer, can we do a roll call vote?
Yes. Mr. Alcarro?
Yes.
Ms. Lee?
Yes.
Dr. Acuff?
Yes.
Ms. Osborne?
Yes.
Mr. Oberg?
Yes.
Ms. Carlson?
Yes, and before we get any motions out of the closed meeting, I'm going to go ahead and read that message that Graham normally reads, and I guess just announce for the people that are viewing this via the live stream that our chair is not, is having internet difficulties and is not here, so I'm running the meeting instead until he can show up. And so I'll go ahead and read what he reads, "This meeting is being held electronically pursuant to Virginia state law and Admiral County ordinance because the COVID-19 pandemic makes it impractical and unsafe to assemble a quorum physically in a single location. The meeting is being streamed live on the Admiral County Public Schools website and public comment may be offered through the Zoom waiting room feature in accordance with the school board's protocol or by written submission." With that out of the way, do we have a motion coming out of closed meeting?
I move that the board accept the reduction in force program as laid out in closed meeting.
Second.
Jennifer, can we take a vote?
Mr. Alcarro?
Yes.
Mr. Oberg?
Yes.
Ms. Lee?
Yes.
Dr. Acuff?
Yes.
Ms. Osborne?
Yes.
Ms. Carlson?
Yes. The next thing on our agenda is the call to order, so maybe I got things a little out of there by doing our meeting announcement, but I'd like to call this, it's today's date, April 22nd, meeting of the Admiral County School Board to order. Next, I would like to ask for a moment of silence. The next item on our agenda is item 2.0, approval of the agenda, does anyone have a motion?
I move that we approve tonight's agenda.
Second.
Moved by Ms. Acuff, seconded by Mr. Alcarro, can we have a vote, Jennifer?
Ms. Lee?
Yes.
Dr. Acuff?
Yes.
Mr. Alcarro?
Yes.
Mr. Oberg?
Yes.
Ms. Osborne?
Yes.
Ms. Carlson?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Fantastic, the next item on our agenda is item 3.0, approval of the consent agenda. Do we have a motion?
I move that we approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Is there any discussion, or does anyone want to pull any items? Okay, hearing none, can we please have a vote, Ms. Johnson?
Mr. Oberg?
Yes.
Ms. Lee?
Yes.
Dr. Acuff?
Yes.
Ms. Osborne?
Yes.
Mr. Alcarro?
Yes.
Ms. Carlson?
Yes.
Motion passed.
The next item on our agenda is going to be item 5.0, announcements, are there any announcements that need to be made at this time?
We do not have any announcements at this time.
The next item on our agenda is item 6.0, School Board Superintendent Business, Dr. Haas, if I recall correctly, did you have an item?
That's correct, thank you, Ms. Carlson. So, good evening, School Board members, and to all of our Admiral County Schools community, on Monday, we made a public announcement on the topic I'm about to address, however, in consultation with Mr. Page and with Ms. Carlson, I think it is a good idea to repeat it during this board meeting. Our default plan for reopening Admiral County Public Schools for the 2021-22 school year will be to provide five days per week of in-person instruction at our school buildings and sites. This is based on at least four developments. The continued success of our mitigation strategies and practices. Updated guidance from the Centers for Disease Control that schools can consider a reduction in physical distancing guidelines from six feet to three feet provided face masks continue to be required for all students and staff. The success of the Blue Ridge Health Department's program to fully vaccinate ACPS staff who have sought vaccination, and that soon may include offering vaccines to students as young as 12 years old. And the recent legislation signed by governor, by our governor, Governor Northam, that takes effect on July 1 and requires all school divisions in Virginia to provide students in all grade levels with five days a week in-person instruction each week. Families still would be able to opt for virtual instruction. I previously said that by May the 6th, I would present to the school board my recommendation for how our schools should operate when the new school year begins. I am prepared to say now to our board that we have begun planning to offer in-person five-day-per-week instruction to all students beginning on August 23rd. The purpose of our extra meeting on May 6th will now be to explain how we will accomplish offering five days per week in person. On May 6th, I will provide more details about these plans and encourage suggestions from the board members on how we can improve upon that plan. My recommendation will be that the school board approve our plans as the default unless, of course, circumstances materially change. On a second note, we also have begun planning to offer a fully virtual elementary, middle, and high school for those families who prefer that choice. And finally, on a third note, I announced on Monday that our schools will remain in our current Stage 4 for the remainder of the 2021-2020-21 school year. There is a careful balance in place right now to ensure there is adequate staff to support in-person students, the same is true of our transportation network, we currently employ more than 560 different bus routes to bring students to and from school. Disturbing this balance at this late date in the school year would detract from our ability to make our current Stage 4 plan work as designed. That doesn't mean that moving forward, the needs of all of our students are not very much on my mind and on our mind. We understand many of our students have likely suffered learning losses and have missed their interactions with teachers and their classmates. It's why we are doing something this summer that is a rarity for any school division, we're offering summer programming to all students whose families choose to participate. At all of our schools, well, provided through all of our schools and at various school sites, we will be providing both a morning session devoted to academic enrichment and an afternoon session in collaboration with community partners to promote student social and emotional health and physical fitness. I hope as many, I hope as many of our families as possible will join us with this summer to enable their children to benefit from this new enrichment program and reconnect with their peers in a safe, healthy, and fulfilling environment. Of course, we will hear more about our recovery plans tonight during the work session. Ms. Carlson, thank you very much for giving me the floor for a few minutes.
Thank you, Dr. Haas, and I'm, y'all might have seen the smile light up my face, in part because we're planning for five days of school week, but also because Chair Page showed up in the middle of your, your statement, and so I happily.
Don't yield the floor.
Yield the floor, hand the gavel back to him. Mr. Page, we are just finishing up with School Board Superintendent Business, although there might be School Board members who have business, I hadn't asked that yet. So if you're ready, jump in, go for it.
Okay, thanks, Ms. Carlson, I really am sorry about being late, but I've had some severe internet problems this afternoon. So are there any School Board members who have any business?
I didn't know whether to do it now or save it for later, Ms. Lee and I met with the Black Student, Students Union at Admiral High School last week, and they are focused on developing data for, concerning the numbers of Black students who either do advanced placement or dual enrollment. And one of the questions I guess I have for staff, and I don't know if Ms. Judy, Ms. Lee joins me or not, is when two or three years ago we eliminated fees for academic programs, do we have anything in place regarding the cost of AP courses or materials? And we don't have, I don't have to have the answer tonight, but that was one question that was raised, and I think we don't, and I just, we just like some feedback on that at some point.
Thanks, Kate, I agree with that.
Okay, Dr. Haas and Ms. Collins, et cetera, will you be able to address Dr. Acuff's question either via email or some method?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right, thank you. All right.
I want to say one thing, I guess speaking to that point, one, our student rep isn't here, so I didn't know, Jennifer, if you could send out a reminder, I didn't know if she had let one of us know.
Yes, she let me know that she was going out of town.
Okay, and the only reason I bring it up is because I, that is something that she's interested in as well, Kate and Judy, and so it might be worth talking to her, because when we met with her, that, I believe she had said that was something that was on her mind, was kind of the tracking of students and whether they get into that, so she'd be a good person to reach out to.
This Black Student Union, Students Union is, has developed questionnaires and are surveying students, teachers, and counselors, and they will have some results before the end of the school year, and I think it might be interesting to invite them to give a, give a presentation of their results.
That'd be awesome, because I feel like with, for taking away the fees, I've always been kind of curious if that's gotten the results that we wanted or had an effect, but I'll stop talking to you.
Right, yeah, thanks, all of you for your comments, and Ms. Bonds and Ms. Shana, who was our student alternate, also, both of them let Ms. Johnston know today that they wouldn't be able to be at tonight's meeting, so I'm sorry that I didn't get that across to Ms. Carlson, so that she would have known that. All right, our next item, I don't think we had anyone for public comment as of the deadline this afternoon, so is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. All right, so moving along then, our next item is our COVID update, Dr. McLaughlin and Ms. Gomez.
Hi, good evening, Board members, I'm Pat McLaughlin, Chief of Strategic Planning for the Division, and I'm here tonight with Eileen Gomez to provide our COVID-19 status update. As the board knows, we follow a five-step process that is recommended by the Virginia Department of Health and the Virginia Department of Education for guidelines on reopening our schools, and one of the things the board has asked us to report on every meeting is the level of community transmission. Before we get into our slides, I do want to point out a bit of an anomaly that's, that's taken place with the data in the last couple of days, as Eileen, who follows this so closely, pointed out that yesterday, the numbers started doing some really strange things. For example, we had 65 cases reported in Admiral County, which we haven't seen for months, and City of Charlottesville had negative 35 cases reported on their dashboard. And so Eileen reached out to the Health Department, and what she was able to find out was that there was a backlog of a number of cases that the Health Department has recently started to input. Cases are reported on the day they're entered into the system, not the day that testing takes place. So what we did to, to make sure our data was really the most accurate we could, is our latest data is reported from Tuesday, the 20th of this week, so you'll see a little bit of a change in the date, we usually report the, the data from the current day, but those numbers are really, are really throwing things off a bit, so we're going to work with the Health Department and, and make sure we're reconciling that. So when you see some asterisks tonight on the, on the following slides, that's, that's why. So I'll turn things over to Eileen.
Thank you, Dr. McLaughlin, and thank you for that explanation, I know that some of the board members follow this data daily as well, and so they probably had some questions about the big number yesterday for Admiral County and the extremely small number for the City of Charlottesville. The, the minus 35, I found out for the City of Charlottesville, is because they sometimes, well, they, they reassign addresses, so sometimes they get testing results in our health district, but the people actually live outside of our health district, so then they take the, the data out of our numbers and move them into the health district where the people reside. So, as you can see here on this slide, that for Admiral County, as of Tuesday, the seven-day floating average was 14.1, that is the, you'll recall, the number of cases per 100,000 of the population on a seven-day average. This number has been increasing for the past 18 days, which exceeds the threshold of 14 days, so this is considered an increasing trend, but it's, as you can see, it's not really increasing a lot. The, the percent positivity for Admiral County as of Tuesday was 2.9%. This indicator has been increasing for 10 days as of Tuesday, which does not exceed the threshold of 14, so this is considered a fluctuating trend still. For the City of Charlottesville, when we had the negative 35 cases in that seven-day average that brought today's seven-day average to two, or something like that, so when we, we go back to Tuesday before we had that, the number of cases was 17.2 for the previous average of this last seven days, and this indicator has been increasing for 10 days, so, excuse me, this indicator has been decreasing, and this is considered a decreasing trend. Because that has been, that has been for, let's see, 15 days, so that exceeds the 14-day threshold. For the percent positivity, we have 1.8% for the City of Charlottesville, and this has been decreasing for the past 15 days, so this is, excuse me, this has been decreasing for the past 12 days, but they, it hasn't exceeded the threshold, so this is considered a fluctuating trend.
Now, I. Thanks, Eileen, I'm sorry, go ahead, Eileen.
I was just, I don't know if you wanted me to talk about the, the vaccinations?
Yes, please, that'd be great.
Okay, so I understand that some of you are interested in the vaccination rate for students 16 through 18 years old, because those are the only students for which the vaccine has been licensed for, to use, but the Health Department reports vaccination data in categories not specific to exact ages but in ranges, so they have the range of 10 to 19 years old, and of course, since it's not licensed for anybody below the age of 16, that really is in effect ages 16 through 19. So when we look at the numbers that way, we have youth who are not high school age, we have the 19-year-olds, and some of them may be UVA students or 19-year-olds in the community, but it does give us an idea of what this population with the vaccination rate is looking like in this age group. As of last week, before they opened up vaccination to anybody age 16 and over, we had 1,338 youth ages 16 to 19 who have received at least one dose of the vaccine, that was 8.7% of those kids. We had 280 individuals in that age group who were considered fully vaccinated, which in the case of the Pfizer vaccine, which is the only one licensed for ages 16 and 17, that was of two weeks after the second dose, that was 1.8% of the individuals in that age group, but then when they opened it up this week, as of yesterday, 2,665 youth in that age group have been vaccinated with at least one dose, and that is 12%, and fully vaccinated was 675 or 3%, so, and, and just a very short number of days, we're starting to see a lot more people in this age group get vaccinated, so that is good news, and I'll turn it back over to you, Dr. McLaughlin.
Yeah, thanks, Eileen, I appreciate you digging into those numbers. And so when you, when you look at our, our combined CDC core indicators, as we look at each week, you can see that we remain in the substantial range for our case incidence rate and in the low range for our percent positivity, when you, when those numbers don't agree with each other, we go with the higher of the two, so for the past six weeks, we have been in the substantial range. And again, as the board knows, we take those and we look at the level of school impact, we still are rating ourselves at a low level because we just have sporadic cases within our schools without evidence of transmission, our absenteeism is at normal levels, and our staff capacity is at normal levels. And when you combine that with our transmission in the community, you see that we're at the same stage that's recommended by the CDC that we've been for, for quite a number of weeks right now, where pre-K through 12 instruction is encouraged to be open to in-person instruction to the maximum extent possible. So that is our update for tonight, we would be happy to, to take any questions that the board may have.
Are there any questions from the board? Okay, if not, thank you, Dr. McLaughlin and Ms. Gomez, for your report.
Thank you.
All right, our next item, the budget development updates, Ms. Kumazawa will lead this off.
Good evening, I'm Maya Kumazawa, Director of Planning and Budget, and I'm here to provide you with some updates and to solicit guidance as we move, move forward in the budget process. Here's an agenda for this evening. In March, three budget-related motions were approved, and we'd like to check in with you about each of these. The first motion was related to our differentiated staffing, and this will be presented by Jamie Galner, Division Program Evaluator. Next, we will check in on the motion to review our adopted market basket presented by Dana Robb, Program Manager. For these first two items, we're looking for direction from the school board, which will inform our FY '23 and future budget processes. The third item is an update on FY '22, our next year's budget. For this item, we are looking for direction in preparation for your budget adoption in the next month, and with that, I will hand things over to Ms. Galner to address the first item.
Good evening, my name is Jamie Galner, Division Program Evaluator. In March, Dr. Acuff stated in her motion that ACPS provides additional funding for schools in the division based on the percent of low-income students enrolled at each school, that is, students who are eligible for free introduced lunch. This differentiated funding introduced approximately 20 years ago is used to provide additional staffing resources to improve educational achievement. She specifically asked if the differentiated funding is the best tool to address these gaps, and if an income-only-based model is the metric to use. Dr. Acuff's request is primarily research-based and questions if the strategy we're using is the most appropriate. Because of the nature of this evaluation question, we are proposing the following guiding questions for this evaluation. What are the best strategies to equitably fund schools to close achievement gaps according to current research? What funding strategies have actually been most impactful in closing achievement gaps in Virginia? How does ACPS allocate funding to all schools? How is the additional staffing used? What impacts on student achievement are we able to identify as a result of this funding strategy? And what other funding models may ACPS consider? Attached to the board's item tonight, there was some preliminary research from EAB around differentiated funding models for equity. ACPS uses one model of differentiated funding, but there are in fact many ways that divisions differentiate funding. The evaluation will provide mainly a research brief that outlines options for other differentiated funding models and explains the process by which ACPS differentiates funding for schools. We would also answer if ACPS funding strategies are best-practice strategies and find out what other Virginia divisions are doing to close gaps. The question of central or school allocation would also be covered under other funding models as well. Is there anything additional the board would like to add to the scope of this evaluation? And what does the board hope to accomplish by conducting this evaluation?
Is there any input from the board on either of those two questions, given directions to the committee?
Well, the only comment I have, and I, and I spoke with Jamie earlier today, at least emailed her, is in the EAB report, they're looking at differentiated funding related to instruction, and my question was, is focused on, I know at least some of the schools, I recently visited Greer, have used a differentiated staffing for mental health support counselors, and I'm wondering whether that should be part of the differentiated funding, or that should be distributed differently? And I don't know the answer. Hence the question.
Dr. Acuff, would you want the staff to investigate that too, in addition to those six other items?
I think the way the questions are already crafted probably covers it, but that's my, one of my areas of particular interest, is whether, since we have been working to develop our mental health capacity at ACPS, and we have added counselors, and we have some additional funding this year for that. Whether that, whether principals should have to decide between a counselor and instructional support person, or whether that should be something determined by an overarching mental health policy.
In terms of the second question about what we're hoping to accomplish by conducting the evaluation, I don't, well, I'll just speak for myself, is that a, a direct answer to that, I think a lot of that's going to depend on what some of the answers that Ms. Galner finds in answering the other questions, and I think that if there's something that, that jumps out, I think we'll be interested in talking about that and seeing what the best avenue forward would be.
Thank you, Ms. Alcarro.
All right, can we go back so I can see the questions?
The questions, yeah.
I guess just to, these look like, I was, these look like good questions. I'm in agreement with doing this study and doing a deeper dive into our, our funding model. I guess for me, just to give you some direction, what I'm interested in finding out is whether or not we're, the funding model that we're using is creating inequities between our own schools. I know that we're going to be looking at what other schools are doing, but I'm like, I guess I'm worried about how principals, kind of what Kate was saying, how different principals are using their funding and whether or not it's creating disparities between our schools and it's, you know. Yeah, I guess that that would be it. And what other models might, might speak to that or be able to, I don't know. So that depends on the answer, but that's what I'm interested in. Are there inequities? Like when I ask those kind of follow-up questions, it's school-specific, like what is this school doing versus this school? And, and is it okay that we're, we're letting principals have that kind of local control or autonomy? I don't know.
Okay, Ms. Carlson, do you think the six questions cover that, or would you think that should be a seventh question?
I think the answer to that could be wrapped into one of these, but I don't think it hurts to have a seventh question. I would not be able to craft it right now, probably very eloquently off the top of my head, but something speaking to in our own system. Are we realizing inequities based on how staff is choosing to use their funding within our own school system? Matt, would you have a better way to say it? I feel like you have done some thinking on this.
Thank you. I, what, so what I'm hearing is an interest in finding out, at least this is a question that comes to my mind, is, well, how, how is autonomy or, or center? You know, we, we've often said we're a site-based managed school system, and to what degree would, is autonomy hindering our, our progress? And is there, is there a correlation in the school systems that we might study between the amount of central authority over the way staffing is allocated at the school and their success with closing achievement gaps?
Yes, and I think those might emerge. I'll add that as another question. I've got the notes. And it also may emerge under best strategies to equitably fund schools in Virginia. When I speak to other school divisions, I can ask them specifically about their levels of autonomy.
Are there any other questions that board members would like to be addressed by staff? Besides now, I think seven, the seven that we have.
Well, I just wanted to second, oh, sorry.
No, go ahead, Judy.
I just wanted to second what Katrina said. I'm, I'm also quite interested in, you know, whether that sort of, to what degree that autonomy affects our equitable practices.
Okay, right.
Just, that was the most succinct way of saying it that got right to it. I should have just, that was good, good.
I, I just took what you said.
Okay, but we are all in agreement that that should be a seventh question to add, right? Is anybody disagree with adding that as a seventh question?
It's almost as if that's a part B to number three.
Yeah, I was thinking that too. Okay. Did you have something else to add?
I, I did. I mean, the original impetus for me asking this question or making this motion was, as far as I could tell, the differentiated staffing or funding is based solely on income. And we have enormous differences across our schools in our demographics as well. And in, in light of our commitment to evaluate all of our policies with the equity lens, I was just wondering, perhaps that will get to it, but if, as far as I understand, the primary variable in determining this is income only, but we have a lot of other data about our students, and maybe we should factor that in. I'd be very curious to see how other schools do this.
Okay, are there any other comments on the questions or the addition that we have added here? All right, Mr. Elkar had said that with the second question, and could we go to that, please? Yeah, but the second question that he, he would be okay with seeing what the answers to the other questions that we have already proposed, what those are. And then that might sort of have some effect on what the board would expect to be accomplishing. So are there any other views on that? Any other thoughts on that second question?
Well, what I'm, what I'm interested in, are we deploying our resources in the most efficient and impactful way to address equity in our schools? And, and that's sort of our overarching mission. So are we spending enough? Are we spending too much? Are we not spending it in the right places? I don't know the answers.
Okay. But you were saying, I think, that what this, what's being discussed here would let us know whether or not that is true, whether or not we are spending our money in the best way to make sure that equity is being accomplished between all the schools. Is that basically what you were saying?
I'm saying it will provide evidence of that.
Okay, right.
And the other variable is school control versus central control on some or all of it, I think.
Okay. All right, any other discussion on the second question? Or Ms. Gallner, did you get notes on those comments that would help?
I did. Thank you, Mr. Page.
Okay.
Our next presenter will be Dana Robb, who is the Program Manager for Compensation and Rewards.
Thank you, Ms. Gallner. Actually, it's going to be me, Lorna Jerome, Director of Human Resources. Dana, Ms. Robb unfortunately lost her internet, as I'm sure some of you can relate. So I'm going to be standing in for her this evening. We would also like direction around the compensation adopted market. I know many of you are familiar with the current market we have. It was adopted back in two thousand. The, the market is twenty-six school divisions, and we initially had a target to be at the median or the fiftieth percentile. So back in two thousand five, that target was changed to be at the top quartile or the seventy-fifth percent. And then in two thousand seventeen, we took another look at the market and our methodology along with Titan Gallagher Consultant. That resulted in the change in the way that we develop our scale and use the two anchor point. But we know that a motion was made, and, and I'll read it for you. After this budget season and prior to the next budget season, staff do an evaluation of the current market basket methodology. So our question is very broad. We, we would really like to know what compensation objective you would like to accomplish with this review of our market, beginning with the, the end in mind. So I'll open it up to you all so that, that we can get that direction.
Board comments, board answers?
Well, Mr. Jerome, what I am interested in, I, I mean, we have dramatically, I think, improved our methodology and straightened the line. My question really is, are the twenty-six schools in our market basket the appropriate comparison market? Twenty-six school divisions, yeah.
Yeah, that would be my concern too, whether or not those divisions are quite similar to, to ours. And, you know, every aspect, student population, equity issues, et cetera.
So what I'm hearing is you would like us maybe to target divisions that are, that look more similar to our division in terms of student enrollment, the work they're doing.
Right.
Okay.
That's, that's what I think we should be doing.
And I agree with that. And, and, and Lorna, I just want to say that, that I thought that, that the changes that were made in two thousand seventeen with the anchor points, the two anchor points was, was a great first step. I think now is the time to be moving on to exactly what Mr. Page is talking about and, and exactly the way you describe it.
Very helpful.
Okay, Ms. Jerome, thank you. Do you, are there any other, is there any other input though for that question? Ms. Jerome? Okay.
I don't have a board, I don't have a board input, but my input would be, I would like to not be behind the city of Charlottesville with our compensation.
Okay, true.
Right.
Right.
And I, I, I just, many of the school divisions in the mark, in the twenty-six members of our market are much more rural than we are. We've had extraordinary growth in the population in our county and changes in the demographics of our county. I, I just question whether we need a different group of schools to be compared to. And like Dr. Hawes, it is a challenge for us, I think, always being behind the city of Charlottesville, which is probably our biggest competitor.
True.
Wonderful. Well, I thank you for that clarity.
All right, thank you.
All right, thank you, Ms. Jerome. In March, as you all were approving the funding request, it was also approved by you to increase our classified salary increase to be higher than two percent. I plan to address this with you today. The exact motion is written out here for your reference. And I'll move right along. Before we jump into our recommendation, though, I want to orient you to our starting point. The approved funding request on March eleventh will be our baseline for the purposes of our discussion this evening. You approved a balanced funding request with two hundred nine point nine million dollars in both revenues and expenditures. Here's a summary of our most recent revisions. The most significant impact that you see here is our state projections, which now reflects the most recently released state conference budget. We're seeing an increase in funding due to higher projections in sales tax, but more significantly due to funding for a five percent salary increase for SOQ-funded positions over the current biennium. As a reminder, we had already planned for a five percent teacher salary increase before the state agreed to move in this direction. We've also made some technical adjustments on the expenditure side as we firmed up our minimum pay rate proposal and other approved items. In addition, you may remember that we had about two hundred and eighty thousand dollars in unallocated expenditures back in March. This brings us to total available funding of approximately one point seven million dollars. Here are staff's recommendations on how the one point seven million dollars should be allocated. Per your motion, we recommend increasing the classified salary increase from two percent to four percent. I'll provide more details about this in just a moment. We also recommend increasing the teacher salary increase from five percent to five point two percent. While a five percent raise is in line with the market, the extra bump will further enable us to be more competitive with our teacher pay scale. Next, we propose restoring the STEP proposal from last year, which would expand our STEP program to four remaining schools. After this expansion, all comprehensive middle and high schools will have funding for STEP. We also propose restoring three positions, which were reduced during the last budget cycle due to the pandemic. We began this year's budget process with fifteen reduced positions. We've since then restored six point five FTEs, and we now propose restoring three additional FTEs, resulting in a total restoration of nine point five. Five point five positions will remain unfunded. Finally, we recommend putting the remainder of the expenditure change as transfers to special revenue funds to serve as contingency measures as both next year and years beyond that remain somewhat uncertain. Here's some data regarding our classified market. We recently conducted a review of the adopted market and found that non-teaching staff in those divisions that responded are providing a median salary increase of five percent. The details of individual school divisions' plans are listed here. We recommend a four percent salary increase for classified staff that's provided on top of adjustments as a result of the fifteen dollar minimum pay rate proposal. On average, classified staff will receive higher than four percent increases when combined with a minimum pay rate proposal. This slide digs a little bit deeper into the recommendation for classified staff. Here are some examples of positions who are and who are not impacted by the minimum pay rate proposal. For example, a typical part-time TA may earn thirteen dollars and fifty cents per hour currently. But as a result of adjustments due to the minimum pay rate proposal, this example TA would get an adjustment to fifteen dollars and ninety-nine cents per hour. The four percent pay increase would then be added on top of that to bring them to a new hourly wage of sixteen dollars and sixty-three cents. The total increase for this TA from this year to next year would be twenty-three percent. You can see some other examples here as well that follow the same format. The proposal that we are recommending to bring back is the STEP proposal that we would like to restore that we discussed during last year's budget process. As I mentioned earlier, this proposal would expand the program to our remaining schools by adding point five FTE to Sutherland and Henley Middle Schools and Albemarle and Western Albemarle Middle Schools. Finally, I do want to mention that we made some other technical adjustments. The first piece is with regards to the four point one million dollars budgeted in our use of fund balance. While the total amount remains the same, we did make some slight shifts within these areas to reflect our most current and urgent needs. Similarly, we've made technical adjustments within the special revenue funds primarily to account for changes in compensation assumptions, including the salary increase recommendations that we just discussed. Again, the total amount remains unchanged. Here are our next steps. After discussing, after our discussion this evening, the Board of Supervisors has planned to adopt the county budget, which includes the transfer to ACPS. Our plan is to bring back an item to you on May thirteenth for action to approve the FY twenty-two budget. The budget would then be appropriated in June in order to prepare us for the next fiscal year. So this brings us to the conclusion of my piece and the question for you all. Do you all agree with these recommendations in preparation for budget adoption on May thirteenth? And what other questions do you have?
I like every one of the recommendations, and I'm very pleased with the classified staff increase to four percent. I, I think that's a great decision and a great recommendation. Thank you for all of it and bringing back STEP into the other four schools. I think it's going to be extremely valuable in those schools, and the rest of the recommendations, I feel the same way.
So Ma, you think really a total of four changes you'd be bringing back in May, right? The four that you mentioned tonight?
Yes. Okay. On, on May thirteenth, we would bring forward just a basic summary of what the balanced budget looks like. And then there would be an approval if you didn't have any changes from this evening. But the, the budget that we'll bring forward on May thirteenth will include these changes.
Okay. Any other comments or discussion or questions from board members?
Ms. Kumizawa, I I also agree with these proposals. But I did have a question about the county's reaction to this shift in commonality with the 4% increase.
So I'll I'll take that. Hold on just a second. I gotta lower my blind a little bit here. Sorry. Sorry, Dr. Acuff. I I we have when we have our steering team meetings with local government, we made them aware that we were going to be really looking hard at our market because of our, you know, the discoveries that we had around being behind the city and the other local school divisions really catching up on us. And so before we brought this to you tonight, I did call the county executive and let let his let him know that we were going to be doing a 4% compensation increase for our classified staff. And I gave him the rationale for it that we had we had studied our market and that we found that other school systems that we compete with are doing what what I what I think we should do, which is they couple their their licensed staff pay raises with their classified staff. They do not couple it with their local government. They they treat all the employees in their school systems the same. We're not doing five and five this year. However, I think having the $15 pay increase the or the $15 minimum really accomplishes a lot. That's equivalent to going after 5%, especially at the lower the lower paid position. So we I did talk to Mr. Richardson about that. I think it really helps that in addition to everything else, we do have a balanced budget. So we're not saying we're gonna double what the county is proposing to do, and we want more funding to go with it. So I think we've done it within the constraints that we have. And he said to me that it made perfect sense.
Thank you, Dr. Haas.
Thank you.
Are there any?
Dr. Haas, off of that is would we in the future, then, with this knowledge that other divisions couple their license and their classified pay raises, would we be looking at that in the future as well?
I I want to look hard at that because I feel like, well, it's not just a feeling, but I think it's a it's a fairness ethic within our organization that we should really look hard at having equivalent pay raises for classified staff and for licensed staff. So I we have time, you know, we have some time as we make our way into getting ready for the next funding request. I do think that's part of that market study that Dr. Acuff moved at our at our last meeting. So I want to keep that on on the burner.
I definitely agree with that. Thank you.
Thank you.
There any other comments? Okay, thank you, Ms. Kumizawa, for your presentation. And we'll look forward to your final presentation recommendations to us at the May meeting. So thank you so much.
Thank you.
We are now scheduled for a 10-minute break before we go into our main work session for this afternoon. So we'll take a 10-minute break and then resume our meeting. Okay. Thank you. So we are ready to continue with our agenda. Our learning recovery work session by Ms. Collins and Ms. Sublet.
Good evening. I'm Debbie Collins, Deputy Superintendent. The next portion of tonight's work session will focus on how we plan to support student learning over the next 18 to 24 months. Dr. Haas, would you like to say a few words before we begin?
I I would. Thank you very much, Ms. Collins. I just want to say that I'm really very proud of Ms. Sublet and Ms. Gellner and the whole steering team that has been working very hard, putting a lot of time and energy into this project. And I'm excited about the the plans that are that are in development. I'm excited for the board to see them tonight. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Dr. Haas. As Dr. Haas said, to address the complexities of learning recovery, we have assembled a project team with representation from across several offices and departments. Tonight's session will be led by Jennifer Sublet, who is serving as the Project Manager for Learning Recovery. Ms. Sublet?
Thank you, Ms. Collins. I'm Jennifer Sublet, Director of the Professional Learning Department. Our purpose tonight is to frame how we plan to address learning recovery as a school system and community of learners in the months and years ahead. Tonight, we will share the guiding principles and desired outcomes developed by our project team. In an effort to give concrete examples of how these principles will be actualized, we will dig into two key strategies that will help us achieve our desired outcomes. We will also look at how our model for summer programming will serve as a foundation for learning recovery and is aligned to our guiding principles. There are a lot of elements to this project, and we will try to be both clear and comprehensive in our overview tonight. Our goal is to get feedback from the board on the vision our team is building for learning recovery and these first strategies that we have identified. We first framed our approach to learning recovery this spring during the superintendent's budget request. As we explained then, we have been focused on attending to urgent needs of our students and teachers brought about by the pandemic and the transition to virtual and then hybrid instruction. As we move forward into the summer and next year, we're transitioning into a period of recovery. This is an opportunity to focus our efforts on strategies and best practices that we know have high levels of impact for all students. This is also an opportunity for us to learn from the experience of the past year and focus our efforts on what we have learned is most essential for students. While this year has been challenging, to say the least, there is opportunity in the powerful positive power of disruption that will support transformation and rebuilding. I would like to begin by providing an overview of how our project team has created a framework to organize our work in order to plan coordinated efforts across department departments to support students. Given the iterative process of planning, implementing, and evaluating that will be needed during this period of recovery, our team first co-constructed guiding principles that will shape our decision-making and setting the priorities. As you can see in these principles, there is a direct alignment to our school system's vision and mission as well as our equity mission. We've provided a link to our full guiding principles document in the notes of this presentation for more information and detail. From these principles, we set about determining our long-term outcomes. Beyond the goal of making sure that student academic achievement levels return to or exceed pre-pandemic levels, our outcomes will also address the social, emotional, and wellness needs brought about by the conditions of the past year. I would like to point out that we are keenly aware that the learning environment at this school year has impacted not just our students, but also our teachers, families, and community at large. We want to partner with all stakeholders and seek to ensure that our efforts provide benefits across these groups. Finally, I want to share a link to the initial logic model the team has drafted to identify key strategies to meet our outcomes. We see this document as a working document that will evolve and grow as we reflect on our progress towards our outcomes. Again, this is an incredibly complex project. We invite you to take time to review our current logic model, which we've linked here. So we see our work as a series of multiple plan-do-study-act cycles. This will allow us to respond to current needs with thoughtful strategies that are then monitored and evaluated for their impact. What you see here is a schema for our first PDSA cycle around planning for summer program supports, which will spotlight later on in this presentation. So in summary, we're being careful to make sure that our approach to learning recovery takes into account the whole student. Again, this is not a new focus for our division, and it highlights the point that recovery is about focusing on high-impact strategies that align to our educational philosophy and core values as a school system. We'll begin tonight's deeper dive into our approach to learning recovery with a focus on academic achievement. As we do that, we think it is important to reframe our efforts from a focus on learning loss to a focus on learning opportunities. This work is a chance to reignite our commitment to consistent application of high-impact strategies and to do so with fidelity. Tonight, we will look at student self-efficacy and how student goal-setting and self-reflection are critical components of building self-efficacy. Student self-efficacy is a perfect example of a critical component of student success. Research shows a relationship between high levels of efficacy and student achievement. Furthermore, student self-efficacy is interdependent with student social-emotional learning and aligns to our division's commitment to culturally responsive teaching and its focus on creating active, independent learners for the formation of learning partnerships. As Aretha Hammond notes, the ultimate goal is to help students take over the reins of their learning. If they are to become independent, we have to provide them with the tools. So to understand how to provide students those tools for success and independence, we have to first unpack self-efficacy. In his visible learning work, John Hattie refers to student self-efficacy as a student's perception of their capacity for success and ranks it as one of the top high-yield strategies in education. In short, high self-efficacy is the confidence or strength of belief that one can learn and experience success in learning. Low self-efficacy is a lack of that confidence. This is important because students tend to avoid tasks that they think exceed their ability and seek tasks at which they think they can succeed. Therefore, self-efficacy judgments affect which activities students choose or avoid, how much effort they put into learning tasks, and how much resilience they have and how long they'll persist with a task. We've linked a short video clip of Hattie on this topic in the presentation notes in case you want to dive even further. The importance of student self-efficacy is clear, and its potential impact on student achievement is great. However, our task is to identify concrete strategies that we can implement, which are shown to increase self-efficacy. It is not enough for us to merely hope students gain our confidence and their potential. We must purposely create the learning conditions and experiences that do that. This graphic outlines a framework for integrating a system of strategies that provide those conditions for every student. By focusing on students setting goals that are created with their teacher and personalized to their learning needs, we help them become an active partner in their learning. Furthermore, by setting up systems for them to self-assess their progress and share that reflection in their own learning conference, they take ownership of their learning. I would like to point out that these are reflective processes based on the critical relationship between students and teachers and students, teachers, and families. As such, they are manageable in terms of implementation, but deeply meaningful in their impact. Having looked at a high-yield strategy for academic achievement, we will now turn to social-emotional learning needs and their relationship to student success in school and beyond. Again, we see this as an opportunity to reengage with a focus area that has been a priority for us and to do so with the goal of improving our support of students. The Collaborative for Academic Social and Emotional Learning, or CASSL, is the preeminent resource for research on supporting SCL development. CASSL defines social-emotional learning as the process through which all young people and adults acquire and apply the knowledge, skills, and attitudes that allow them to develop healthy identities, manage emotions, and achieve personal and collective goals, feel and show empathy for others, establish and maintain supportive relationships, and make responsible and caring decisions. As we review this definition, you can see the link to academic learning and to the strategies to support student self-efficacy described earlier. Knowing that SCL is a critical component of student success and recognizing that the conditions of the past year, from school closings to stay-at-home orders, impacted and in many cases disrupted students' development of SCL skills, the work team began by evaluating our K-12 supports for social-emotional development. We are fortunate in our division to have a solid foundation of programs and structures on which we can now build and improve our practice. From the philosophical foundation that responsive classroom provides for our elementary classes to personal connections created for all freshmen through freshman seminar, our division has exhibited a strong commitment to SCL development. I would like to bring in Kevin Curse, our Executive Director of Student Services and a member of our project team, to share the work that the SCL Subcommittee has done to evaluate what additional layer of support is needed in this domain. This work is an excellent example of how recovery opportunity lays the foundation for rebuilding and improvement within our school system. Mr. Curse?
Thank you. I am Kevin Curse, your Executive Director, Special Ed and Student Services. And I do want to talk about, our subgroup did go through a process of evaluating various tools and systems in order to promote what we believe is what gets measured really does get done. And we landed on what is called the DESA. That is the DEVERO Student Strengths Assessment System for Social-Emotional Learning. And as I will explain to you in a few moments, this system, the DESA, allows us to do periodic assessment that allows, that really promotes teacher collaboration with students and families. Also enables us to take action in a very individualized and targeted way with students with evidence-based practices. And to outline what the DESA is, it consists of a universal screener, which takes about one minute to administer per student. It's eight items with high reliability that allows us to discern those students that have intact competencies in the social-emotional learning framework that Jen just talked about with CASSL from those kids that need more attention, more support. With the kids that need more support, there is the standard DESA, which then takes about six to eight minutes to administer, that is more diagnostic in nature, and it breaks down those different competencies into the areas that the student has strengths in and those that they need more support with. Now, at the high school level, we pivot. Same system built on the same competencies, but developmentally appropriate levels. We look at high school as promoting a self-assessment, where the students would assess themselves. It does promote self-efficacy and really that true sense of the student owning their own development through goal-setting and challenges that are embedded in the system. They do this both independently, but also with the support of a teacher. And that is what we could balance based on the student needs. As mentioned earlier, this system isn't just aligned with CASSL. It used CASSL to develop the instrument. Provides us reports and insights into student development. And a nice plus, it provides evidence-based practices that are aligned to the specific areas of the CASSL, the specific competencies at a school level, small group level, and even individual level. I'm not going to read the slide to you, folks. It is a respected instrument. I had the great fortune to be, to meet the co-author on the early inception of the DESA. Was very impressed then because it is rooted in the theories behind resiliency and social-emotional theories, learning, and also fits beautifully in our school-based intervention teamwork at the schools with regards to response to intervention. Because it is also a progress monitoring tool, it allows us to monitor how we're doing with kids at the individual level, and here's where we're backward scaling, right? At the individual level, grade level, school level, or even for you to see how are we doing in the division in our work with social-emotional learning. It has been validated, as noted here, with a number of peer-reviewed studies and is nationally normed to give us a sense of how are our kids doing with regard to the nation. I would like to point out, one of the pieces that has impressed me with the DESA over the years, even more so now that it's automated, is the balance that the DESA provides our system in that it strikes a balance between respecting teacher time with providing a tool that is valid and reliable. That really does give us a full array of tools to monitor how we're doing and actually put things into play. Along the bottom are a number of partners that use the DESA in Virginia or that are associated with Virginia. So we're not alone in implementing DESA as a way to implement social-emotional learning and monitor our progress. And on the next slide, just wanted to highlight, as Jen mentioned earlier, the different competencies. I would imagine one question is, what are these CASSL competencies? And as, and here they are outlined. Again, not going to read to you as much as here they are, and that the DESA is built on top of each of these to provide strategic information in order to enable us to help our kids. So, in sum, I believe the DESA will be a critical resource in providing opportunities for learning for our kids that also provides the community and you accountability for our work, while at the same time increasing capacity of our staff through the use of the DESA. It will increase awareness and what these competencies are and how we could use this, again, opportunity to make a difference for kids in a very explicit way, in an intentional way. And then lastly, and I do believe most importantly, it allows us to identify the students that need our support the most and in a very individualized and targeted way, help them out and actually show progress. Jen, any questions? I mean, I guess that's for later.
We got a process for that. We have a protocol.
Sorry.
We do want to point out that while we don't have time tonight to delve into the mental and physical wellness components, and I think you can see the connection also of how the DESA helps to support us with that. We do want to mention that projects teamwork tonight. In addition, we have Miles Nelson joining us. He's our new mental health coordinator. This will be an important new support. We also want to point out that our instructional program will continue to integrate a robust physical education curriculum as students return to school for five days a week, as we were talking earlier this evening. We know that healthy students are healthy learners. You'll see this theme in our review of summer programming as well. So, thanks, Mr. Curse. As the board can see, our learning recovery work is about refocusing our efforts and supporting opportunities to improve our consistent use of practices that have a high impact on student success. This excerpt from a Fall 2020 Ed Week Report on learning recovery is an excellent summary of the framework that we're using. In order to make up for lost learning, schools must attend to students' social, emotional, and mental health needs, say experts. This may well require a shift in thinking of some school leaders. Social-emotional development is not in competition with academics, but rather it is a prerequisite for success. And again, that speaks to the framework that we have developed for both the coming year as well as for the summer. So we spent quite a bit of time framing our approach to learning recovery and delving into a couple of high-yield strategies and tools that we hope to use to meet our outcomes. What we'd like to do is to take some time now to share examples of what these proposed strategies will actually look like within our classrooms. As we move into breakout rooms for this observation and evaluation activity, I want to highlight the interconnected nature yet again of what we have discussed tonight. The strategies that we are proposing to increase student self-efficacy align to the social-emotional competencies articulated by CASSL. We believe this alignment is critical in supporting our students' growth. This alignment also allows for a more targeted focus by teachers as they aren't trying to make connections between disparate elements of instruction. So what we'd like to do now is we're going to move into three breakout rooms. In these rooms, you will view a brief video of a student-led conference. A student-led conference is a culminating event in the progression of strategies that increase student self-efficacy and support social-emotional learning. So in your rooms, we would like for you to watch a student-led conference. As you watch, think about the focus on students' self-efficacy and social-emotional learning. How do you see both of them supported by this type of culminating event? After viewing, you'll do a SWOT analysis with members of our project work team to provide this feedback on this framework that we've developed for learning recovery. We hope that this is a helpful way for you to see a concrete example of the concepts and strategies that we've covered tonight. So we'll have a SWOT analysis, what the jam board to support us in this. And I just want to introduce and thank members of our project team who are joining us. So I'll be in room one with Ms. Sims, room two, Michelle Castor, Jay Thomas, and Miles Nelson. Welcome, Miles Nelson. Nothing like a school board meeting to jump right into a new role. And room three will have Ms. Collins, Mr. Curse, and Ms. Gellner. Ms. Johnson, could you put us into breakout rooms? I think fifteen to seventeen minutes would be great. And to my friends who are facilitating, don't forget to share your sound when you share your screen.
So Jen, I think everybody is in their breakout rooms.
Okay, excellent. It's the silence of Zoom. Let me get more of my.
And everybody in this room is in the public. Okay.
Excellent. I can't see everybody. I want to take my, so hello. I get reoriented real quick. All right, thank you. I am going to make sure that my sound is being shared. So I'm going to stop for just a moment. And we share. Yes, it is. Thank you. And Sims, thank you for joining me tonight. So we're going to watch one of the three student-led conferences. Again, they're wonderful examples, and so I'd encourage you, if you ever want to go back in, we're going to start with kindergarten, but the middle school and high school, they become equally powerful as the students get older. So we'll take a moment to do this together.
My name is Trinity. I'm in kindergarten and my school is called Delaware Edge Elementary School.
First thing that our students do is they greet their parents or whoever is there to listen to their learning.
And we say, do you like a high five, handshake, or a hug? The second thing we do is our welcome song.
To get kindergartners ready for their student-led conference.
Here are two of my reading strategies.
We just take it a little bit by little. Students will share their learning targets before they talk about each page that they are sharing.
I can demonstrate how to use picture clues when reading. If they dragonfly.
How do you know that's a dragonfly?
Because a dragonfly has these things. I can stretch outwards to hear all the sounds. To do a student-led conference, you can be in first grade, second grade, or third grade, or fourth grade, or fifth grade, or you can be in kindergarten.
I can find the sum of two numbers. We put in dots to make it equal the seven. Since I taught you, may you do one whatever cutting grade you're in.
Are you using any two numbers?
Ten plus ten. You have to practice and learn how to do your conferences before you do it, and your teacher can help you.
One, two, three, four, five, six.
We practice for our conferences in our classrooms. We do a fishbowl. I show the students what it would look like and what it will sound like. And then a student will do a fishbowl. And then a student will do a fishbowl and student will share their learning and do their portfolio for the class.
Final draft of egg monitor. These are the things to make the monitor. Focused eyes symmetry, one side is like the other side, and the wings, the body parts, and tinsel legs. What I like about is the colors because it looks beautiful. And the fixes let me teach them symmetry because I think this wing is more than that one.
The last thing they will talk about is their science. So we've done scientific drawings and their learning and how they got to that final draft. They are in insect expert groups.
My insect expert group is ladybug.
And they will share their scientific drawings and their learning so far.
The rats and abdomen. This is kind of squiggly, but we're going to do another one. The steat has three types of ladybugs. They are red and orange and yellow. Yellow.
So that was our first draft, right? So what would you like to work on for your next draft?
Finger spaces.
Okay, that's a great question.
You will practice and practice to get really better. Thank you for coming to my student-led conference. Do you have any questions? And then you can tell about what do you do to get better and better, and you can, you can tell them all about it.
All right, thank you. We speak so much in education terms, right? It's kind of nice to be able to see a concrete example. This is a great example of a resource we can share. We have student-led conferences in places around our county, but the idea of committing to student goal-setting, personalized learning plans, and an event such as sharing their learning is again, a practice of how we can become more consistent in what we're doing. So Ms. Sims and I are going to open a jam board, and what we would like to do is facilitate a chance for you all to give us some feedback on what you've heard so far tonight that we can take back to our steering committee. So Mr. Page and Ms. Osborne, we will scribe for you and try to answer any questions, but also just let you have a healthy conversation. We'll start with sort of strengths of what you've heard tonight.
So who is, who is in this room with us?
We have Dr. Haas, Katrina Sims, who is our K-5 lead coach for language arts. Okay, Mr. McLaughlin, Mr. Jimata. We have others who are here too. Mr. Hairston, who's a member of our steering committee.
Okay. So we're looking, we're doing this SWOT for the, for this specific.
Really for the principles and strategies. So we've, we've focused really on student self-efficacy tonight, but also the concept of the blending of that whole child approach for learning recovery. Oh, and Ms. Akup, sorry, I can only see three of us at a time.
Okay, I think one strength would be Trinity really appears to be very confident in her learning. You know, she looks like she's really amassed it. Knowing about her insects and other things that were in her group. So she looks like she has really got a high degree of self-efficacy. She's very confident, I think, in her ability right now.
Mr. Page? Yeah, as a spin-off of that, I saw practice makes perfect.
Right. Yeah, because she did say something about this is our first ladybug or something like that. And then she was mentioning maybe some others that would be tried later, I think. So yeah, she was really confident.
I did not see the confidence. I saw shyness. And I thought she was coached. I thought she was overly coached.
Oh, okay.
So I just different perspective.
Right.
I think that's an excellent point in terms of we we want to make sure that we provide authentic chances for students to reflect, and that's something that we have to attend to in terms of making sure they feel honest and talking through their opportunities for growth.
But Ms. Sublet, you did say that we would be trying this or implementing this in our classrooms, right?
Exactly. And I think one of the things that's always interesting, a student-led conference is helpful because it's an event that students work towards. But there's layers and layers of work that has to go into students setting goals for themselves and reflecting with their teachers about the progress they're making to those goals. And then students looking at their body of work to see how it shows evidence of their goal attainment. And so when we talk about personalized learning and we talk about students owning their learning, these are concrete strategies that we know are best practice. How do we look at learning recovery as a period where we can have greater fidelity to those practices?
Do we have any sense about how the students feel about this? I know that the student-led conferences are happening in some schools in the county. Do we have any sense of how that's received by the student?
When I've sat in on some of the ones early on, I know that there's always a buzz and an excitement about sharing them. And then a little bit of healthy anxiety, right? Anytime that we're, we're presenting. I think when it's done well, there is an element that it's not overly formulated, that it's authentic. And so it does become also a way for teachers to see how much students have engaged and owned learning. And actually, there are times when if a student's family can't come, then they'll actually ask another trusted adult within the building. So again, it's that reflection and sharing, sharing out loud how they're doing. But I imagine it probably would be mixed in terms of the shyness and how could we accommodate students who might need that support in being able to share publicly.
Ms. Sublet, may I also add on to that as helping teachers get ready for some student-led conferences and participating in some, I would agree that there is that healthy balance of a little bit of anxiety and shyness because you're presenting, but also too, when I've seen it happen in ACPS, it's a little less prescribed. And the students get to choose what they would like to show their families or whoever the, whomever the adults are. So they feel really confident in speaking about it because those are things that they have chosen to be able to show and demonstrate their own personal growth.
Jennifer, is this exercise focused broadly on the learning recovery feedback, learning recovery proposal? Not just about this one method? I mean, what I liked about the approach to the overall learning recovery plan was the balance on the academic, the mental health and physical health, and the social emotional. And I thought Mr. Kurt's presentation about the assessment and the tools to assess social emotional health was quite good. I mean, one of my concerns, and I don't know if it's one of my concerns in the overall plan is how it will actually work with what we're contemplating as an all online school. It doesn't seem to me that the tools. A, I'm concerned on who would, we've had a skew in who has not participated in in-school programming already, and if we have that in the all online school, I'm concerned. And we're all virtual. And how can these, yeah, right, how do these supports work in that environment? And what will the social emotional assessment tools reveal about particularly our, our elementary school kids? I am easy about it.
Okay, I have a question about how long have we been using this and, you know, within the system?
Student-led conferences?
Yeah.
Again, right now, and this is one of the challenges, I think, is that we have pockets of this type of practice. How do we support more consistent implementation of goal-setting with students, personalizing that plan to help them reach those goals, and then helping them reflect on their progress? So I think we are seizing on this as an opportunity to have more program fidelity and consistency in these high-yield practices. And so that's an opportunity for us.
Right. How, for they want box, how would we be able to ask, assess how effective this method has been? Would there be any concrete testing that could be done? We'd be able to probably see a difference in the conversation and in the confidence like Ms. Osborne mentioned. But would there be any other ways of assessing how effective the program has been?
It's always a challenge in educational research to isolate a factor. Right. And one of the reasons why the steering team really began to explore personalized learning and especially students' efficacy is that when we look at educational research, for example, John Hattie has a 1.4 effect size. It's the highest yield strategy in his research. And so while we might not be able to isolate out this change, we would be looking for behaviors such as students' levels of persistence and resilience and working on tasks of rigor increasing. We would also be looking for evidence that students are more reflective and metacognitive about their progress. And we would be looking at how that then would impact actual academic achievement data. So I think that's an excellent question, and that's something that we can take back to the learning recovery team because evaluation of learning recovery is definitely a key element of our plans. And I think as we move into the summer, we really will need to make sure that we have those monitoring and evaluation elements in place. I think that's an excellent point.
I think it would be helpful to talk to some of the students who've done the student-led conferences. My guys did it in middle school and probably nothing is impressive when you're a middle school boy, but it was not impressive to me. But it could have been the subject matter. It could have been the students.
Well, and I know, so for example, I have seen it done with corners cut, shall we say, right? Like, hey, Mom, I have this form that has to be filled out. I have to sit down with you after dinner and we have to talk about this. That's not a student-led conference.
That's exactly what it was. And it was, that's not impressive, but it was done with fidelity. That could be a different outcome.
Exactly. Go ahead.
I was just going to say that was one of the themes like I've heard. I'm trying to like do that box down the bottom. Like, that's a theme I heard was fidelity. Trying to have fidelity.
And I know we're running out of time, but is this Dessa assessment program, we've not used, that's a new thing for us? Is that correct?
It is. It is. And I think again, that speaks to, we have robust SCL supports. How do we explicitly look at their impact for program fidelity? But then also, how do we, rather than simply creating a supportive learning environment, how do we really help support students when we know there's a struggle?
Right.
Do you know how long the Trinity had been involved in this process, you know?
Right. And the ECL model, and there's a, there is a complimentary video, like a companion video that looks at the school levels of support, how the PLC works together, and how the faculty has a whole approach that's unified, and then how they integrate it into instruction in terms of practicing. And I know as a teacher, when I would have highly public presentations and events for students, much like the High Tech High Model, that practice is really important. If, you know, you're not doing new content, so you always worry about use of class time, it's incredibly important for students as they develop the competence and the competence to interact with others and to really articulate where they are as a learner. We are getting close to time. Are there other elements that sort of stick out in your mind that we want to make sure we capture, that we can take back to the steering team?
You did add evaluation of some type in, right?
Yeah.
Hard to read the little.
I have three monitors and they get increasingly larger as I get older. I'm just going to add it there just to make sure.
Yes, Ms. Sublet, I put it, I added it in, in the blue, so it's, so we have it twice now, but. And also too, within our protocol, we also wanted to have someone from the group be able to share out. So I don't know if we, if someone in our group would like to be the speaker for our group when we come back. I know we're getting close to ending this session.
I nominate Ellen.
Nope, I nominate Dr. Akup.
I second the nomination.
Everyone should be back in this room now.
Okay, so Dr. Akup, you've been nominated.
No, no, I nominated Ellen.
No, but then Ellen nominated you and I second the nomination. That takes.
I want to jump in and nominate Jono. Just wanted to make that clear.
I second that. I think Jono should have to.
Oh, so now we're back in the group with everybody.
Thank you. I'd like a roll call vote on that.
All right.
Judy?
Yes.
Me, yes. Motion carries.
Okay.
Craig's just like, all right.
Because we were talking and then all at once, we ended up with you guys, you know?
Sorry.
I appreciate it because it's giving me a chance to go from the jam board back to my presentation because of course I lost my Google slides. So if room one has a, somebody who would like to share, we'd appreciate it.
Okay, Dr. Akup?
I got Dragoon to do this. Oh, we don't have the stickies.
No, this is something new. Oh, whoa.
Well, I think, I think what we saw with the strengths of individualized learning were were important in, in giving students the autonomy and the efficacy of showing their work. We definitely wanted to make sure that whatever we were doing had some evaluation protocols built in. There was some concern about how these tools will be, can be implemented in a virtual school. And some concerns about that. One of the strengths was overall balancing the academic, the mental health, physical health, and social emotional learning and the tools to do that part, the social emotional were pretty impressive. Would either of my colleagues, Mr. Page or Ms. Osborne, like to add to that?
No, you did an excellent job, I think.
Good.
All right, anybody from room two?
They're not as organized as room one.
That's when I nominated Jono.
Yeah, that's, that's, yeah, she nominated me because I can't use mute button. We ended up talking more about the overall of what was discussed in Ms. Sublet's presentation as opposed to, to the video. You know, the one thing that I would say about the video was that I've sat through a couple of student conferences at Greer a couple of years ago. And, and it was just, they were fabulous. And in, there were three, and in two of them, the parents were crying. You know, they were so emotional about how their child who could speak English in one case where they couldn't was talking to them so well, and they were just overcome. We were talking in terms of the overall, we liked, you know, how the structure was laid out in terms of the what? You know, for the program. We appreciated the SCL component and thought that was so important, especially right now. In terms of wants, we had, we had a few of these. I don't think we got through all of them. But the difference between the relationship between SCL and mental and physical wellness, we want to, you know, get, get that. we want to, you know, get, get that expanded on. When will the, what you were talking about, Jen, be ready to go? And in terms of, will the assessments start before the end of the school year? Will they start after the end of the school year? When will they be, how long will it take to get it analyzed? Because if we want to go into the, to the summer school with some of this, you know, it would probably need to be pretty quick. I can't quite read that one, want to know. Judy, if you can read that one in the top right-hand corner there, I sure would appreciate it.
Sure, I, I just was, I wanted to know more about the academic outcomes from this year and what the academic focus would be moving forward.
Thank you. Boy, I'm having trouble with those. You know, the accountability and how we know when things are working, you know, as, as we move forward with, through all of the process. And what the PD offerings. We, we're sure of the right person to talk to about that. You know, in terms of how to implement, how to work with the students in, in doing the assessments. And, and how will the teachers especially be trained for that? And I have no idea on that one either. Down in the, in the opportunities, you know, I, I made the comment about, I think, how that CRT training will be absolutely invaluable for this, because it can go across every group in our, throughout our schools. And, and, and I think every, every family and every student will benefit from that. And, and Judy made a great point in terms of, we gotta seize, seize on the creative solutions more than just brick and mortar. And that was a big thing that we, that families and students and all of us talked about a lot over the course of the last year. And, and the last one is the communications with families. More and more are going to be absolutely vital. And we'll get to themes after the next session.
Thank you. All right, Room Three?
Dave, would you like to talk through it?
I volunteer for Trina. She outranks me, so I think she's better.
Um. Flattery, flattery. I'm happy to talk through it. So for, one, it's been really interesting to listen to y'all's thoughts. The accountability piece resonates with me. But for strengths, we had, especially at the high school level, clearly, the strength is letting students have ownership. Students have ownership over their own learning and what they're accomplishing. They're, they're transitioning to adulthood in college, you often don't even get feedback. So it's really important to be until the final, so it's really important to be cognizant of, of your own growth. For wants, what would you want to see more of? We had some questions about what this is going to look like for the teacher workload. I think we wanted to be cognizant of just, of not just shotguning things that teachers do this, do this, do this, do this, it's going to make it better. And so how can we implement strategies to help teachers do this in a way that doesn't feel like just additional work or changes? For opportunities, the biggest one that resonated with us is learning from the pandemic. It would be great if we can continue to use technology to assist, assist with conferences. Having them via Zoom is a big benefit to a lot of families. Just having student work in general available on, with technology has been really helpful. I think both as parents, Dave and I both spoke about how it's been really nice this year to be able to check in on our students and our due conferences without having to go into the building. So we'd like to see that continue. And then I think I skipped one up in the strengths was just that it can strengthen, strengthening partnerships between actually parents and students and having an understanding of what your own child is doing in school. I remember back when I was a teacher, a lot of times I would actually, the parents would do most of the talking, because they'd want, they'd have all these questions about what was happening. And so if you start facilitating, facilitating those conversations where students are telling their own parents what they're doing, and where it's, it's actually really helpful even outside of student conferences.
And I just want to throw in that I think the theme that hits me is, you know, let the calendar be our friend. This is, you know, we're, we're, the pandemic is, has been terrible. I think we're just, I guess, one of those things that's gonna, that's gonna resonate with us for a lot of the, for us for the rest of our lives. But we're gonna recover, we're gonna be there. And we have to breathe. We, you know, the parents, the students, the, the staff, we all have to just work the process and not panic.
Thank you all so much. That's really not only philosophical feedback for us, but actionable feedback. And so we really appreciate that because it helps us. We're a new team and we're forming, and this helps us make sure that we have all the pieces in play as we move into the year. There is actually an article linked in the presentation, I'd be happy to email to the board, that really speaks nicely to how mental health and SCL sort of coexist and influence each other, but the distinction between them. So just because I had the same question as we began to do the work. I think for all of us on the steering team, this is quite the learning journey as well. So again, thank you so much for the thoughtful feedback and for elements that will give us concrete next steps as we move forward.
Would you please send that article to us?
I will, I will. It really, it helps me. Always, anything that helps me understand and clarify, I'm happy to share. So we're excited to now turn to provide an overview of our model for summer programming with students. We really do see this as the launch of our learning recovery work. As such, our goal is that our model for programming aligns the principles of our learning recovery model. So again, we're committed, committed to a focus on equity, the whole child, personalized learning, and relationships. With careful consideration of the types of learning and social activities that students have missed most and the toll that virtual and hybrid instruction has taken on our families and community, we've expanded and enhanced our summer program for students. One of the most exciting aspects of this expansion is partnering with community organizations and businesses to make high-quality programming available to our elementary and middle school students and to support our families with a full-day, full-week program for our students. Knowing that many students missed out on the interactions of in-person summer activities in 2020, and that in-person time with peers was limited this school year, we prioritize making a full week of programming available for all elementary and middle school students. We will run this programming for the entire month of July and invite those students who have significant academic intervention needs to attend for all four weeks. At the high school level, our goal is to help students who have fallen behind in course credits. We know that the virtual environment has been a challenge for some, and so we're moving to an in-person credit recovery approach. High school students will get personalized support with their teachers. To help us in our planning for an expanded summer program, we surveyed families to gauge interest in participating in morning and afternoon programs. This was not a registration or formal commitment, but it did help us to plan strategically. We see high levels of interest in participating this summer. And when asked about priorities, we see that our families share an interest in supporting academic and SCL opportunities. It is interesting when we ask them that they could select other, I went back and asked Chris Gilman, what, did they, I don't have any data on what the other was, because they all said all of the above. So anyone who said other was, they then wrote in all of the above. Beyond academics, families were able to weigh in on types of activities that they thought students would most enjoy this summer. Again, you can see the variety of topics, but also the inclusion of time with peers. Here's a framework of what a student's schedule will look like. In the morning, ACPA staff will work with students on focused academic construction and engaging problem-based learning that is creative and collaborative. In the afternoon, students have the option to remain at school and participate in engaging summer camp-like activities. To build out the afternoon programming, we completed a request for proposals through the procurement process. Because of the regulations of the RFP process, at this time, we cannot share which organizations will be providing programming, but we will do so as soon as that process is complete. However, we are so pleased with the response we got to our RFP from businesses and organizations within our community. We really value their willingness to partner with us. We'd like to dig into what we mean by focusing on problem-based learning with our students. This summer, we are excited that funding is allowing us to fully implement a nationally-recognized program called Camp Invention. Working with the National Association of Inventors, Camp Invention is a hands-on STEM-based PBL program that supports students in critical and creative thinking. Each student receives a comprehensive kit with all the materials they need to build not only a finished product, but also to build conceptual understandings and creative thinking skills. Teachers are able to use the program as a springboard for creating connections with traditional academic subjects such as science, math, and literature. This video showcases the Camp Invention approach. If you'd like to learn more about this year's creative projects, I have pasted a link into them in the presentation notes. So I'm going to make sure I have my audio on for screen sharing. And a quick note, this is an overview of Camp Invention. It was clearly filmed before the pandemic because kids are really close together and they're not wearing masks. But in the materials for this year, they do have mitigation practices in place. And actually, each kid gets their own kit so that they can collaborate and work, but they have their own materials and all of our mitigation strategies can remain in place.
Camp Invention is an opportunity for kids and instructors to learn different things about science that maybe they never thought of.
We learn how to bake dogs and build mansions.
Camp Invention is important because it's a science-based camp that allows kids to do hands-on activities.
Breaking the dogs apart to see how they work.
We just made little catapults.
Technology, engineering.
Biology, we got the anatomy.
The job of the red blood cells.
To carry oxygen throughout the body.
We actually have brainstorm ideas and build stuff.
We created these optobots where they can kind of personalize and make it their own.
Work together and we learn to like cooperate with other people.
Maybe we could try to use some modeling clay.
You have a curriculum that guides you through day by day. It gives you that ability to experiment, think, and create.
We are innovators.
Share with their partners, share with their team, and they really have gelled into such successful groups that are able to collaborate.
Campers who walk away from Camp Invention should feel like they can do anything and that their ideas are important.
Again, we, we spoke earlier about wanting to make sure that the work that we're doing for students is manageable for teachers. Being able to provide a resource like this that comes with materials, that comes with projects, does help support our teachers. And we know that by asking for their support in coming to work with our students this summer, we want to make sure that we give them as much support as possible. A quick note on our model for the 912 program. Again, in the morning, a focus on credit recovery. We are also, though, creating a framework that, as fitting for older students, the activities outside of the academic time will be driven by student interest. And so we've created a system for teachers to pitch fun activities they want to organize for students around interests. This builds on the robust club and extracurricular programs that we have in our high schools and also gives them time for our teachers to have creative ways to reengage with students in a personalized way. So while we're excited about our plans for expanding summer programming, we do want to assure all of our stakeholders that we will be continuing to follow mitigation protocols to safeguard the health of students and staff. It was nostalgic, wasn't it, to see students all up in each other's spaces and, and sharing materials and whatnot? But we will have just as much fun being safe and socially distanced as well this summer. So what we would like to do is now to move back into breakout rooms to get some feedback on our summer, summer programming model and plans. After the breakout rooms, I'll let you guys do the turf war again about who wants to, to share out. But we just would like a little bit of feedback, feedback as we do the heavy lifting to get ready for summer. So Ms. Johnson, if we could do breakout rooms, probably just 10 minutes this time would be, would be great. This time, I'm going to be aware that we're in our breakout rooms, managing all the different strings.
It looks like everybody should be in their breakout rooms now.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson. All right, thoughts on the summer plan?
Okay, I think one strength will be that we'll be focusing on, on the high school level, or at the high school level with course credits that might have been lost or compromised in some type of way. So I think that's really something important for high school kids.
I think having worked in the summer high school programs and we've done edgenuity, I'm really excited to see students coming back in to work with teachers. I think that's going to be important if the virtual hasn't been working for them.
And will the Camp Invention kit be for what, K, I mean, up to what, fifth grade?
So they do have fifth grade, we actually are going to be able to, they have a middle school program as well, and the Sims can speak to that a little bit.
Sure, we will be able to do Camp Invention for students K through eight this year.
In the, in the presentation, it said that the camp would be available would, for, for kids who had fallen more behind would be available for the whole four weeks. What sort of, I guess this is, I don't know what it is, a strength or a question. How are we going to recruit those kids? I mean, it seems to me we need to have some affirmative outreach.
Yes, within each of our, our buildings, students, for example, metrics such as reading below, at least a full year, a grade level below, reading below grade level. Put that together. I know, right? Students who can't talk. Those students will be invited. And so that is not atypical, that once we identify students with an academic need, the students, the assistant principals and counselors reach out to families to specifically recruit them coming. And so one of the challenges we know this year has been that for many of our families, not having a full day, a full week of school and not having a full day is a challenge for working families. So I think that our hope is that we'll have higher levels of participation for our students who are academically behind by giving families that full day and by giving them a full, a full week within those four week periods.
I would put that then as a strength, yes. Will high school students have the option of the summer school online as well as in the building?
Was that, I'm sorry, was that high school and middle school?
High school, yeah, I was talking, thinking about.
For initial credit, we will have virtual course offerings available. Students can continue to work virtually, but one of the interventions that we think is important is that for our students who haven't engaged in the virtual environment and our high school students were virtual for so long this year, it's likely that that environment is not one that's leading to their success. And so we want to put first, put a lot of effort into getting those students into the building in a small group environment with really focused work on getting that credit recovery complete. If we have to accommodate, then we can do so. But we think it's really important that we get that in-person instruction returning for the students who really just haven't been able to engage.
I thought the Camp Invention presentation, I mean, I think that's extraordinarily strong. Promoting kids' creativity, interacting with other kids. And, I mean, it was a promo for it, I know, but I'm excited about doing, doing the projects.
And are there enough activities in that kit that would last like for the whole week?
Go ahead.
Oh, I was gonna, you can jump in too, Ms. Sublet, sorry. The way that we have it set up for elementary, there will be two programs that they do over the course of four weeks. That'll be the length of time. And we've worked out the amount of time each day so that they can complete those modules. And then for middle school, we've designed it such that they will complete a module each week. So if there's a student who only comes for one week, they'll have a completed module. If there's a student who comes for three weeks, they'll still have completed modules. And each person in elementary through middle school will have their own personal kit with directions. So if perchance they stop coming, they can still continue the projects at home.
And it really, from a, you know, I see everything through a PD lens, right? Project-based learning is, it's a, it's a ballet. It really, to really develop a strong PBL. And so providing the resource for our teachers will leave some of that stress, but it also gives them a wonderful experience. but it also gives them a wonderful experience to have a professionally developed curricular plan that they implement with really high-quality materials. And so I see that as a real win, that teachers get to have that experience in working with students this summer too.
Okay, another question I have is will the middle and the high school students be chosen in the same way that the test grades or some criteria will be used to decide whether or not it would be best for them to be there?
For the four weeks, yes. So for the high school, it's related to failure rates within their courses. So a credit that they don't have, that they need to complete a course that they don't fall behind for graduation. In the elementary and middle schools, we have within our response to intervention program, students who are in a tier-two intervention, meaning that beyond their core courses, they are receiving intervention supports in order to help them make up academic, needed academic gains. And so those students are already identified within our, our program. And then their school counselors and their assistant principals would work with the families to encourage them to participate this summer. And I think one of the things that is always having, you know, talked to students and families as a building administrator, one of the things that's really important is the emphasis on a creative summer programming to attract students in. So parents are excited, right? But my kids need to come to school and this is going to be great, but there has to be that attraction. I think if we have, summer intervention does not sound like a great way to spend your July if you're a 12-year-old who hasn't been successful in school. And so we really are excited about the ability to provide by something that's a lot more creative.
Okay, I also have a question about the actual sites for summer school. Have, has that been determined or how far along is this committee on that?
Yes, so I've been in some wonderful meetings with operations. We have a couple of construction projects this summer. We also are balancing out, again, our staff from every position you can think of is, you know, it's been, it's been a year. It's been stressed. And so we are trying to make the most efficient use of transportation, of child nutrition, as well as our teaching staff. And so we will consolidate some sites, but we've done that traditionally. So we will be consolidating some of our elementary school sites. But for example, you know, out where I grew up, Crozay and Brownsville, that's sort of the same community, right? They feel pretty synonymous out there. So we've been trying to very purposely look at how we would be combining our sites. But we do anticipate that each of our middle schools and each of our high schools will be a site for summer programming.
Good.
I think one, I'm very interested once we, you're able to identify the community partners for, for the other part of this program. But I think the two themes of providing for the high school students some critically needed input, but also some excitement and some for the younger kids plus having public-private partnerships are two important themes. We're going to need those partnerships all across our grade levels, whether they're doing internships next year or whatever. But I think getting the community involved, because I think it's very salient right now. Everyone is concerned about our kids.
Right.
And their physical and mental and academic health.
And, and we see it as an, as an equity win. We know that many of our families can send their students to high-quality summer programming, but not all of them can. And so partnering and making that available does feel like equity of opportunity.
So for a theme, I'm kind of seeing consistency across grade levels. Offerings seem to be equal all the way across.
That is definitely our goal.
And the quality.
I guess one question I have, I don't know that it fits in any of these boxes, but what are we doing about our language, English language learners in the summer camp? What kind of supports are there for that?
That will be, we do have some specific programs that run for English language learners in the summer traditionally. So those will continue, but we will also make sure that we have supports to make sure that those students participate within, within our program as well. Trying to add without.
Sunbot.
Right.
Read the sunbot instructions.
Right.
All right, Ms. Osborne, you have been nominated to do our presentation.
I'll second that.
Oh, guys, okay. So I will say that after I do that, though, I need to drop off my, my UVA son just came in. So I would like to see him and find out why he's here.
The mother of teenagers, I can relate. And Ms. Osborne, I'd like to say I really appreciated your feedback about student-led conferences. I think we had a very similar experience and said that was really important feedback.
Hey, Graham, did you like that part about the secondary students picking like the things they're going to do? Because remember, we had the meeting with the SCA students last week and they talked about having an intramural program?
Right, yeah, yeah.
I saw that, yeah.
Yeah, that would be good.
We need to get the, the county student council involved in setting that up, Jen.
Yes.
There, that was one of the recommendations was to have intramural programming for all, for high school students.
Right, so that would fit right in.
Yeah, I like that.
Everyone should be joining back into this room now.
Excellent, thank you, Ms. Johnston. All right, so again, we'd love to just hear a little bit about actual feedback on our summer programming plans. Ms. Osborne, I'm afraid you were nominated for room one. It's a tough crowd in room one.
Right, I need to see the jam board.
Oh, yes, sir, yes, ma'am.
Oh, so we thought that, um, we really thought the strength was having a full week. And it sounded like the operations people are working hard to make sure that transportation happens well and all the nuts and bolts that make this pull together. It's, it sounds like that's happening well. The Camp Invention, we thought looked like a really strong program. And, and our understanding is that goes up to grade eight, I think. We'd like the partnership with communities. We feel like we're going to just need to continue building partnerships around town anyway. So this should be a really good kickoff for that. I like the fact that there appears to be consistent quality across all the grade levels and the things that we are offering. What did I forget, guys?
Nothing, you did a good job.
Thank you. Room two.
Since Jono went last time, I, I think as I was leaving the room, he was nominating me. So I'll go ahead and talk about this. So a huge strength for us was just the accessibility for everyone. And that, that is, you know, unprecedented and really good. But we did have a question, and this sort of straddled, as you can see, all of the, all the different areas, is that, you know, we still have students, a big chunk of students who are choosing to stay virtual now. And I assume that, you know, I don't know what would change for them in the next month and a half, two months. Time has lost meaning to me, but when summer starts. So, you know, what opportunities will we have for students who stay virtual? Especially when we're talking about, you know, credit recovery being in person. So I think that's a really key component to that. One of our, our wants are sort of tied up together. And this is actually just something that I generally would like to see. And I know that, you know, that the video was an example of one thing that we're using. But I haven't yet seen the evidence that project-based learning, problem-based learning, the things that are PBL and change every few years, that that moves the needle for students with the achievement gap. So, so that's just sort of a global thing that I would like to see. But especially, you know, as we're choosing summer programs to make sure that they're equitable and to make sure that they actually have been shown to be equitable. And to move the needle for us on that, since we need to do that. We also have accessibility for everyone as an opportunity that we need to seize on. I mean, like obviously we're seizing on a pretty unique funding opportunity here. Let's see, some of the themes. One of the themes is the opportunity for students to sort of get back to normal and for that to include some fun, you know, the split in the day, give some of that, and then also the availability to everyone. So Jono, if I miss anything, please jump in.
You got it, you got them all.
Thank you, Ms. Lee. And actually, we do have some documentation from Camp Invention, I believe, but also we have some research on project-based learning. I'd be happy to share that as well when I share the mental health and SEL article as well.
Great, thank you.
Of course. And group three.
I love project-based learning, I love play, that's just, that's just me. My father always said, "The work of a child is play." And, you know, that, that, that's how I learn, I learn hands-on. So for me, the, the strength, I just love that. I would want to go to this summer school program. And that's not something that I think often is something people say, "Well, gee, I want to go to school in the summer." I certainly wouldn't have wanted to. Opportunities, then the most obvious one is that we have the potential for in-person instruction. You know, additional reading time focusing on math and reading. One of the, one of the strengths, the, the opportunities that I think we have is, I, I think that as a matter of eventuality, our country is going to have to go to year-round schools. The reality is we're the only country in the world that still has summer break like we have. We know that there's an academic slide every single year. And so this is an opportunity to show our kids, to show our parents, to show our staff that, look, this could be a really good thing that maybe helps us to transition. One of the, one of the, the concerns that we have is that all of our kids have suffered through the pandemic. All of them have suffered setbacks academically, we know they have. But it's not necessarily going to be reflected in their academic performance. And so I, I hope that we don't lose sight of the fact that all of our kids are going to be needing assistance, even if it doesn't reflect that on their grades or their test scores. We want to, our wants are we want to make it manageable for parents so that working parents can actually drop off and pick up their kids. And we also, as, as group two, we're concerned that there'd be a virtual option that we're not, because otherwise what we're doing is we may just be extending the, the haves and the have-nots.
Thank you all so much again. We really appreciate the actionable feedback and elements that we can use to expand our planning and to make sure that we have all the components in place. And couldn't agree more that we know no matter, you know, we can wait for, for data. Data's great and important, but there's no need to wait to know that our students and our families have been through a trying year. And that this creates a wonderful opportunity for us to engage and to really partner with them and with our community. So again, we are going to take this back to our steering committee and our work teams that will inform our work. And I just would like to say thank you so much for engaging with us tonight and to give us a chance to show you where we are so far.
Thank you, Ms. Sablet, for, and the entire committee for that wonderful presentation. So we will be looking forward to that date. Are there any other comments or discussion points from any other board members? Any other business?
Any other business generally?
Yes.
Oh, I was just, Monday night I went to the Jack Jewett RIO Citizens Advisory Committee where James Pierce, the director of the Boys and Girls Club, gave us an update on, on that project. And even though it seems very, very, very long and coming, the plans are to break ground in June with an opening for the 22, 23 school year. I think I have that right. So it's going to happen.
Thank you for that update. Any other comments or updates or, Ms. Dale Carroll?
I, I don't know that I was going to say anything, but I will say that I've been in a lot of schools, all the high schools and now all the middle schools and a bunch of the elementary schools. And it is just wonderful to see the kids back in there. And in middle schools, I asked a number of students about how, how it is to be back. And everybody was, yeah, yeah, great, great, great. And I asked, pointing at my mask, "How about this?" And all but one person, and she just didn't say anything, said, you know, "It's so good to be back. This is a small price to pay." And so we're totally good.
Are you, Johnny, are you talking the mask or your face?
You know, that's the scary.
That's not a small price to pay.
No, no, I get that, I get that. And so, but they said it's, 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 it's a small price to pay. And all of the principals in each of the schools I was in said that everybody's cooperating. The only thing they have to really deal with, with masks is when it slips down below the nose. Just remind them and up it goes. And so, and, and, you know, it's, it's just great. I did promise Scottsville Elementary that I would give a wave to them tonight. Hi, Scottsville. And that's, that's all I got. Okay. Any other board members?
I just want to tell you guys I'm just seeing you guys in person.
That's true, that's really true. All right, I did go to an Earth Day sort of event in a way at Monticello High School. We, we remember probably about two years ago. Mr. Stanek brought us some honey from the bees that he had at Monticello. Unfortunately, some of that, the hive, I think, died out. So there'll be no honey this year. But Ms. Bender and Mr. Stanek were sort of setting up new bee colonies or at least trying to entice bees to come into the area to lay eggs and sort of in, produce new hives. So being there for Earth Day was really a nice occasion at Monticello.
You know, just mentioning Monticello, I also saw the junior ROTC group, and I saw a little bit of it online, but half a dozen of them outside working on projects. I was very impressed with the Colonel who's running it and, and with his, I don't know what his rank is, but his assistant who is doing the online work. I, I recommend to all of you, when you go to Monticello, be sure to go check out the junior ROTC.
Okay, all right, any other comments or business by any other board members?
Well, if we're doing feel-good, I do, I want to note that the AHS, the award-winning AHS Literary Magazine is extremely impressive. I, I, I was really blown away by that. I, I just, having grown up and worked, obviously in a different way, but for the student newspaper. And so I just have like a little bit of experience to compare. It, it was amazing, I thought it was really, really good. So I, I just wanted to give a shout out to that.
It's, it is a professional college-level type document. It's really pretty impressive.
Really impressive. So thanks, Ms. Lee, for bringing that to our attention.
You know, one, two other quick things. One is, I'd also like to shout out to the siblings, the brother and the sister, who won the Piedmont Science Fair. They, they both placed first in their categories in the science fair. And I hope that Phil is able to get them to come on with us for a spotlight on education. I think that would be a very, very interesting couple of subjects. And also to the boys' team and the girls' team for cross-country at Western, winning, in the case of the boys, the, the state title for the fourth year in a row. And the girls for winning it for, for the first time in a row. I, I'm not sure how many times they've won it, but, and for the two runners in each category and each boys' team and the girls'. and each boys' team and the girls' team who led the way for those teams. Way to go.
Thank you. Right, all noteworthy events. All right, any other business before we adjourn? Okay, hearing none. Our meeting is adjourned and I think we will be reconvening on May 6th. I missed part of Dr. Haas's presentation, but I think May 6th is still on our calendar. Okay, all right.
Good night, everybody.
Good night, everyone.